Okay, why don't we get started?
Yeah.
Tracy, if Bob shows up, would you please let him in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll keep an eye out.
All the meeting to order. That's my, uh, my mallet here. And thank you for everybody showing up and participating. And I think we, we absolutely need to start off by just thanking all of the frontline medical and emergency workers who are doing such a wonderful job. Um, and also all those essential workers as well, which includes the RMLD employees, um, doing a great job in these dire times. Um, so I hope everyone's been staying safe and let's proceed to the meeting. Um, I'm, uh, this is where we usually, um, um, read before the meeting. This meeting of the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being recorded via Zoom for distribution to the community television stations in Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. Uh, Phil, would you mind being the Board Secretary today?
Yes, I'm the Board Secretary for the, for the whole year. Don't you know that?
I didn't realize that. That's, that's wonderful.
Yeah.
To ask that question again. Could everyone, uh, please identify themselves because we're on the Zoom and it'd be good to do that. Uh, I'll start. We'll go through the Board and then, um, everyone else in the room. I'm John Stempak, uh, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
I'm Dave Hennessy, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners.
Phil Pacino.
Board member. Sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, just Dave Talbot on the Board.
Phil Pacino, the Senior Member of the Board.
Yes, indeed.
And Secretary for the Year.
Yeah, yes.
We have a CAV member, please.
Yeah, I'm Vivek Soni, CAV Member from Reading.
Thank you. And, um, uh, the RMLD people, please.
Colleen O'Brien, General Manager.
Hamid Jafari, Director of Engineering and Operations.
John McDonough.
Wendy Markowitz, the, sorry, John. Wendy Markowitz, Director of Business Finance and Technology.
John McDonough, the Assistant Director of Engineering and Operations. Thank you.
Tracy Schultz, Assistant.
Chuck Underhill, Integrated Resources Director.
Thank you. And for the other members from the Select Board, if you could please introduce yourselves.
Nessa Alvarado, Select Board Liaison.
Karen Herrick, Reading Select Board.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, so the, um, uh, we usually start this with, um, feedback from the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board, um, from the CAB. And, uh, would you care to comment on the recent meeting?
Okay, so, um, the CAB met last week and we got some information on topics that are going to be covered tonight, specifically Items Number Five, Seven, Eight, Nine, and Ten, which are on your agenda, at least the published agenda, are topics that we got information on. So rather than talk about those, I think, you know, let that information be mentioned during the meeting.
Okay.
But I, I think the, the main point was that the CAB is satisfied with how RMLD is addressing these, uh, tough times. And I think that will be, uh, discussed and presented by the different representatives from RMLD. The only other point is that I have reached out to Town Managers. I think RMLD is reaching out to all the different towns to get the extension for the 20-year agreement. Uh, as mentioned, CAB meeting last week. And I have reached out to the Town Manager and to some Select Board personnel at Reading. And I think that issue has not yet been addressed. And they, 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 at least I've made them aware of it. I've, I've talked, sent emails about it and I've also talked with Karen earlier today. So it's, it's a topic that I think all the towns need to address.
Okay. Thank you, Vivek. Um, uh, comments from the liaisons to the RMLD Board from the select persons?
Thanks, John. Uh, yes, Vivek, we did receive your email. Thank you for that. Um, the Board had been interested in pursuing this, um, with the new Board seated after the election. But the priority, honestly, in the last month plus has been in addressing COVID-19. Um, so Karen, if you're comfortable, I can bring this up to the Chair to see when we can have this added to our next agenda. We're meeting weekly now in order to give the community updates on COVID-19. So we should be able to find time. But unfortunately, we haven't had an opportunity just yet.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Karen, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, um, I really appreciate the fact that we've had power almost this entire pandemic. And thank God we're customers. Thank you very much. Um, and I live, I live near Meadowbrook, so I figured like we've been testing your system. So it's been great.
Especially with the fire at Meadowbrook, right?
Exactly. Um, I did want to let you know that, uh, my last meeting as a Reading Finance Committee Member, I did, um, directly ask our Town Manager about, you know, in the event that, um, RMLD wanted to issue some debt going forward, we would, Reading would absolutely be supportive and then we'd bring it to Town Meeting. And, um, the interesting thing is that you would, um, I don't know all the ins and outs, but the, um, I know you have a fabulous debt rating and so does Reading. So the, either one would work, uh, the credit ratings, if you were to do that in the future. And, um, so just want to put that out there. Um, we're, we're behind you.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll certainly take that into consideration. As you know, we're a very conservatively run organization for the length of time we've been in existence. So we've, we've tried to do our best to stay away from debt, but you know, there's always times when you may want to reconsider it. So we'll certainly take that under advisement. Um, uh, if we could move on to, uh, Item Number Five, uh, RMLD's response to COVID-19. Colleen?
Well, I'm gonna let Hamid do that, but before, uh, I pass it over to him, um, I just want to announce that we still have no illnesses here at the RMLD. We still have full business and electric continuity. Um, maybe a little bit later, we can have John give an update from the last storm, but we, uh, we did very well. Um, and, uh, Hamid will talk about some of the phasing. We were extremely proactive when this virus came out because we do, uh, we do provide essential services. And when you do have to continue to provide safe and reliable electricity, we are very familiar with getting into the emergency action mode. Um, so I'll let Hamid go through some of the phasing. We are working now on coming up with our, part of our procedure under our EOP for infectious disease of, um, remobilizing us back towards normal operations, which, um, we'll have, you know, we will continue to follow state, federal, and local, um, uh, guidelines. But we were finding out that there are a lot of efficiency measures, automation and stuff that we will, we will keep intact that have been working really well. But when I get done with that report, I'll be sure to send it out. But I will turn it over to Hamid.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you so much and appreciate the support that we've been receiving during the COVID-19 from all, uh, Town Departments as well as, you know, uh, the Board Members, their support and everyone. So, uh, I'm gonna give you an update, uh, on the infectious disease plan, uh, uh, for the emergency, uh, Plan of Operation as well as the Major Emergency Plan of Operations. The first thing we, we're gonna talk about-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Tracy, are you putting up a-
Yeah, are we, is this the presentation?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you, Hamid.
No, that's fine.
That way we can just quickly go through the slides. We're just gonna give a quick summary. Sorry.
Can you see it?
Yeah, we can see that.
Yes.
The first slide?
Yes.
Okay, give me a-
You, could you go to the next one, please?
This one?
All right, great, yes.
And Phil, hopefully, uh, Phil, hopefully you've seen these when they were emailed out.
I actually see, they're on my computer. I can see them.
Oh, good. Excellent. Oh, great.
Yeah, I see them.
Well, the, uh, RMLD Management Team, we set up the Emergency Response, the Response Team, included, uh, the Directors from all Departments, Business Finance, Engineering Operations, IRD. And we may, we've been doing the Zoom, uh, daily meeting, conference, uh, uh, video conference meetings at 10:00 AM with a full agenda to cover, uh, all the facts, the updates and everything. As far as the employees concerned, we, uh, we immediately implemented the social distancing, separating the trucks. And we provided iPhones, iPad, and also for the employees, when we trained them on the Zoom, how to use that for the team meetings, uh, including with the, uh, operation personnel and also the unions. HR Director, uh, Janet Walsh, sent out employees' update by email, discussing the CDC and the town, public health and federal laws, internal communication, everything that, you know, employees, they needed to know. With the facilities, we basically, uh, checked all the filters throughout the building. The cleaning contractors, they put on notifications for deep cleaning and take extra care following the sanitization of the building, cleaning products, we upgraded. Uh, we know, we also provided gloves for the employees and also the, uh, the wipes, the sanitization wipes. Suspended, we suspended all the non-essential preventative maintenance work. And we only focused on the emergency and the needed work, like the emergency generator and maintenance work that we needed to get done and maybe, uh, the attention, needed attention. Uh, building closure per Board of Health, which Board of Health, uh, recommendations and guidelines were followed and we, it was passed on to the employees. As far as the materials and supplies concerned, we made sure that, you know, we have one month minimal, uh, supplies for both electric and business side. And we contacted all the suppliers to see what the availability of the, uh, supplies are. We reviewed our emergency purchasing laws to make sure that, you know, we follow them, uh, follow the state guidelines. With the IT, we basically provided VPNs for remote work from home. As the employees now, they were working from home and some working from home and they needed to use that uh, to get the files from, uh, RMLD to access their computer. Yes, we assessed the vulnerability risks, we updated the users, that we also watched the NERC reliability compliance issues to make sure that we follow those guidelines. Uh, under the Town and Customers, uh, Colleen represented Town, uh, for RMLD in the Town of Reading Emergency Planning Committee. We provided press release, the constant contact using the, uh, Zoom in order to, uh, demonstrate and honor the Board of Selectments and provide reports for all four towns. Notification to all the customers for operations, uh, we, we did that. The operations also switched from proactive to, uh, reliability projects to maintenance directly related. The ones that, you know, they were immediate threat, uh, and they, they were a threat to the reliability and, and only emergency, uh, services and also for the service connect and disconnect. These are the ones that we, we prioritized and we focused on. Uh, the hardship on moratorium, uh, basically which, uh, the law was pertaining to, uh, property taxes. Uh, although that, you know, we, the, we, we work with the customers on the payment plans. We cannot, uh, you know, we don't have the rate doctoring, uh, to waive or discount. Also, the discounts are not a late fee. However, we work with the customers in order to come up with a payment plan during this, uh, tough times. All the businesses and electric continuity, they, they are intact as of April 14th. The next slide, please. Uh, okay, Emergency Plan of Operation and Major Emergency Plan of Operations was reviewed in detail. We prepared Emergency Plan of Operation for, which was for greater than minimum staffing and also Major Emergency Plan of Operation, which is less than the minimum staffing. We established all electric and business continuity functions and established remote work, the capabilities for the staff, evaluated the plans and also moved from large capital to maintenance, uh, work. We maintained, uh, all onsite contractors to overhead, one underground, they're qualified contractors. They have a knowledge of the system, just in case that, you know, something happens. So they know exactly what, what's expected of them doing and we have a good, these are good contractors. If you had good, great, uh, experience with them. Uh, we maintained the facilities crews and all, uh, also the, uh, staff persons onsite physically with the social distancing, obviously. We reviewed the, all the union contracts for flexibility. And we, we established the Zoom with the unions, uh, for, uh, possible side letters, but we didn't need to really do that. They've been very cooperative as far as, you know, their contract, their contract concerns. We reviewed previously identified and, um, maps of the town with critical infrastructure. We updated them, basically on those maps, we updated the town hall, uh, uh, facilities and police departments, fire, water, sewer, pumping stations, all the nursing homes, assisted living facilities. All of those were identified on the maps, just in case there's an outage, uh, how quickly we could, you know, put them, bring them back, uh, to power. Uh, we reviewed the contingency plans for loss of the substations. Uh, just, uh, they checked the substitution maintenance, update all the substitution equipment. We made sure that they're testing or they're up to date, which they are. And also Wilmington Substation, which remains on a closed lock. As you know, that's our oldest substation. Probably did the single contingency analysis, just in case the substation is lost or something happened to the substation, how we could support and load. The next slide, please. Uh, so these are the, we, they define some phasing. The phasing in order to, you know, to define which group and team up the people so in each phase, so we can continue the electric, uh, and business continuity. So employing phasing one, uh, that's, uh, Emergency Plan of Operation, which means greater than minimum staffing. We set up Team A and B that, you know, they work from home and office. Uh, we switched to electronic signatures, the contract bids, wires, everything, you know. Immediately, you know, we, uh, switched to electronic signatures, set up, you know, using the PDF files. And we set up the Operation Team A and Team B, the line ops and substations. You know, they were separated, physically separated at different locations on the campus. And they're all on call duties, weekend trouble shifts also. Saying, engineering, uh, we had five, we have five control authorities, which three, they're working from home and two physically, uh, distanced with the field and they're ready to, for calling duties uh, if something happens. So they were all set up nicely and it's been, it's been working really great. The next slide, please. The Phase Two was again, Emergency Plan of Operations with minimum staffing. And the Business Team A and B started implementing all the Adobe signatures, preparing their residential commercial payment plans. Uh, we developed revenue impact study and for the rate classifications. The Operations and Engineering Team and A and B, they started rotating. So one week at home, another week at work. And that's been working out really great. The team that they're working from home, they're on call that they could report to work, uh, in a short, uh, time period if they called in. For the storm response, Team A and B, they physically, they distance, uh, report to, uh, locations and trouble response, registration assignments are, were clearly defined. So if they, they come in, they're gonna be separated at Station Four and also at the 230 Ash Street. So we have physical separations. Also, within the groups, they have the, um, minimum distances of six-foot separations. The weekend OT immediately suspended, I mean, it got suspended for non-emergency works. And we limited everyone to eight hours of shift per work, no 16-hour shift schedules. Uh, 12-hour shift for Saturdays, Sundays remain with the, for the trouble workers, unless it's a storm related, you know, we, we, which we just recently experienced on April 13th. Uh, and we brought everybody in. So it, it really worked. Uh, on A and B, everybody reported to work and worked really nicely with the setup that we had already defined. The next slide is the Phase Three. Phase Three is the time that we call it the Major Emergency Plan of Operations. That's for minimum staffing. That is the situation where COVID-19 is next or a coincidence with the storm or any type of, like, major substation losses. And this is the one, we have a plan for that too. The business impact on Team A and B were basically redefined and we extended the, the processes and procedures on the AP's payroll billing, paper payments, box, uh, pickup and, and all of those. And the Operations and Engineering Team A and B will be flexed. At that time, basically, we get all the qualified personnel in control room line operations and substations. And we secure hazardous areas during the storm and the post-storm restoration efforts. Uh, we also contact the Mutual Aid, which we recently signed a contract with, uh, uh, AP and NEPA. And we get every help that we can get. So, uh, that's basically was the plan. And the lessons that learned in the next slide, basically, they, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but basically, these are the lessons that learned. You could read them, uh, from this, uh, this exercise. Uh, basically, we dealing, uh, the daily challenges with public health and the laws, interpretations and applicability. And we've been in contact, you know, and getting, uh, second interpretations from lawyers, from, you know, making sure that, you know, we interpret the laws correctly. And, uh, we've been, you know, another we've been experiencing, I have personally experienced, the Zoom bombing. I mean, the people, the hackers, they get on the Zoom and they try to, you know, uh, later on, they send you the threatening emails. They want money. They want Bitcoin. So be aware of that. Uh, the person, Person Property Tax deferrals, that's another thing that, you know, well, uh, it's, uh, it's been, you know, learned that during this process. And also the payment plan, uh, plan that, you know, utilities, all the municipal utilities that have come up with to work with their customers, so as RMLD. The Town Communications, our RMLD, uh, Impact of Operations, Town of Reading Board of Health, we've been following the Board of Health directives, which is basically the directives that are coming from the state. So we've been closely monitoring those and we pass those, uh, directives to the contractors as well as we've gone over in details with our crews to make sure we follow, uh, the rules and regulations and making sure that, you know, we're all, uh, on the same page with, uh, the rest of the Town Departments. The Town, uh, Town Communications, uh, we talked about the capital to expense money shifting. So the capital projects now, basically, they're on halt and we're focusing on the maintenance. The maintenance related, when we talking about, these are talking about when, you know, for the, the disconnect, connect, connecting the services, if the transformer needs to, to be replaced, then it's not gonna cause an outage to the customer. That, those are the ones that, you know, we're still taking care of, setting poles and making sure that, you know, the reliability system is not compromised. So these are most of the activities that been going on and still going on. And, uh, we were keeping, uh, we were hoping that, you know, we, uh, we go through this process uh, without any major incidents. Uh, lastly, I got a good news for you. Well, we, this year, we got the Reliability Award from APPA again, for the second time. This is our second Reliability Award from APPA for having great reliability. Uh, we got one in 2017 and another one in 2019 because our maintenance, uh, level has been paying off really. Uh, and, uh, the reliability is getting better and better. And we want to keep it that way, hopefully, for, for the future. So the people, they don't have to, uh, experience long extended outages, which, uh, which by in the past, the storm also, uh, I don't think we, majority of the services, I mean, 99% were picked up less than 24 hours. And, uh, only few that, you know, they were left, these are the ones that, you know, they, uh, wired respectives of the, the various towns, they needed to check to, for the safety in order to turn them back on. So that concludes, uh, the report, my report. If you have any questions, uh, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Hamid. That's, uh, that was an excellent, uh, report. And, uh, clearly, uh, I had seen the, the, uh, feedback on the award that the RMLD was given for reliability, uh, which is, uh, uh, pretty spectacular that in a relatively short period of, of time, we've been able to, well, with the extended efforts, be able to, uh, secure such an award. Are there any questions for Hamid?
Um, I do, and I, I would just echo what, what John just said, Hamid, great job. And, um, I had a question of when, when did you first implement the, you know, sort of these health policies with respect to when people are out in the field working and any social distancing or other sort of measures out in the field or, or at the site? When did that first happen?
It was right at the beginning of, uh, this COVID-19. That was back in March, that the social distancing.
February 28th.
February 28th, you started implementing measures to keep people safe.
Right.
And that involved something like that, right?
Right.
That involved any construction activities happening, any utility-related construction activities.
Right.
And that was back in February. And, um, I saw that the, there was a similar order from the town governing non-utility construction. That was about two weeks ago.
Yes.
Can I chime in on that?
Yep.
So, yeah, so we had our first meeting at the end of February and then the town had their first emergency, uh, meeting, uh, on March 3rd, March 2nd, I believe. Um, that, you're talking about the, uh, the Governor's Order on Construction and the subsequent Board of Health. So I had sent an email up to the town asking the Board of Health to consider the different categories that we have for construction. I gave five different categories with a lot of detail in it. Um, and I asked for an update because they had their vote last Monday. Uh, what I got in return, uh, uh, Gene Delio sent it to me, was an order from the Board of Health that is essentially discusses static construction. So a static construction would be like the parking lot or the roof. But it's not electrical work out into the field. So John McDonough took, uh, the order, extracted what we could do for non-static jobs, had a stand-down meeting, uh, went over all of our policies, contacted their, uh, contractor agency. Um, and our employees had already been trained. So Paul McGonigal for Facilities will be discussing stand-down with, uh, with the static projects, which are on hold, but he can call them back to start finishing them up under that policy. But Board of Health didn't really send out something that really applied to municipal workers on non-static projects. So, but we take, we take out a-
You did it a month earlier, is what it sounds like. You were, you were on this a month earlier than that for you, for the utility operations, basically.
I, I feel like you're asking me two different questions. Um-
No, I'm, I'm just kind of, what I'm doing is calling out the great work of RMLD and what it seems like to me that, that the Department, Hamid, you and John were, were implementing safety measures late February.
Yeah, when, when the Governor issued his order, I, I basically sent all the contractors working on static home until such time they had COVID plans. And then we just waited for the Board of Health to come out with their order. But, um, yeah, we trained our employees immediately. But I'm just saying, so, yeah, we were very proactive with it. But I, when you're talking about specifically that order, it's static projects, which we don't have a lot of, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the meantime, I believe, uh, Bob Colter, you've joined us, correct?
Hi, Bob.
Hi, Bob. I think you have to unmute your-
Hi, hi, folks. Hi, how are you?
Good.
I am, I am on. Sorry for being late. I totally zoned.
It's okay.
And I, 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 I'm out literally walking my dog and, uh, I'm like, oh my goodness. So, come on.
Well, we, we do allow one rookie mistake. As a new Commissioner, you get, you get a reprieve. No problem.
We've never been there ourselves, right?
No.
Well, thank you very much, Hamid.
You're welcome.
The, uh, the next, uh, order of business is, uh, the minutes, which I believe are going to be, we'll review those at our next meeting because we've been pretty busy, obviously, with, uh, all the other things that have been going on. Uh, so we'd like to move into the General Managers Report.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, so you, we guys talked about the 20-year agreement already with the Town of Reading. So just an update with Wilmington. So I- So just an update with Wilmington. So I was on their Board of Selectmen meeting last week, gave a presentation, had followed up with some questions that they had um, sent me a couple of days prior. I think they were very happy with um, you know, the thoughtfulness that I replied to their answers on. Uh, the town manager, Jeff Hull, gave us a lot of kudos um, about the value. Uh, one of the questions detailed a lot of the value, both customer service uh, and rates. Uh, we went through that and um, so they took a vote and passed that. So we still have the three towns left. And now that, you know, Vanessa and um, and Karen have discussed it, I will just follow up with Winfield and North Reading again with just another reminder uh, that those have to be done um, by May thirty-first is, is what we're looking at. Um, a hundred and eighty days from um, the time that the ten-year renewal expires. So that's just a reminder. Um, if anybody needs me to forward some questions and values, I'm more than happy to do that. It makes me feel really good when we, when you get a chance to write down everything that we're so good at. Um, all the benefits we have having a municipal light department. When you compare it to IOUs, it's really quite uh, quite amazing. Um, the annual report I sent out.
John, can I ask one question on that topic?
Sure, go right ahead.
Colleen, what happens if all four towns haven't come to an agreement and sign by May thirty, whatever?
Well, actually, one of the, one of the questions that was asked had to do with um, certain things of, in the nature of changing the contract. So I was very clear legally that it takes two different directions. If you wanted to discuss, say, more advisory role in your town, or if you wanted to say, I need a little bit of a, a delay because of COVID. Those are all things that the people that are in the agreement can sit down and talk about and discuss. They're well within the agreement. But let's say someone wanted to have an, an illiterate tax payment increased. That is legislative. You can't, there's a whole bunch of things that you can't do inside of the agreement as just discussion, as a formal discussion. There's a lot of things that go back to special legislation. So, you know, I'm more than happy to send the answers to the questions in. Um, but yeah, so if somebody needed a little bit of time because of COVID, I think if we got everybody together that we would still have to have a formal meeting, but I think it probably would be fine.
Thanks. Good. Thank you.
Um, so the annual report I sent out uh, last Friday, so even though the town meeting got postponed, it was still on the warrant to have the presentations. So um, maybe you guys got a chance to look at it. Uh, kids did a great job with the artwork and, and um, and lots of accomplishments and stuff. But I did write a note in there that the financials are um, a little bit delayed because of COVID and Wendy and I are working on that and they are expected to be in, in follow-up as draft financials in June. Um, so then it will be a complete annual report. And um, you know, take a look at it. If you have any questions, um, you know, let me know. And try to make it pretty self-explanatory and give statistics and profiles and stuff that will help uh, you know, make it a worthy read. So, but uh, Wendy was still on for Ju- June, correct? Did we lose Wendy?
No, she's unmuted.
Sorry. Yes, we are.
Okay, great. And we uh, and I wrote, we, I wrote right on the last page that we don't expect any discrepancies in financials. It all looks good and we present to the board every month. So it's just been chugging along. So it's just more of a formality, but we will, we will make sure to, to uh, follow that up promptly.
Uh, Colleen, could you also talk about the storm responsibly? That's one of the items.
Sure. Um, John, you want to give an update on that, please?
Yes, absolutely. So uh, with the wind event that occurred on last Monday, we did have a total of thirty-nine hundred customers that were affected through our system. We did have the majority of those customers picked up and restored within the first twenty-four hours. As Hamed had alluded to, there were a few outliers that were associated with those restorations that needed wiring inspections or repair to their own personal property. Uh, but we were able to uh, work with our crews. We did split them in different shifts so that nobody was working more than sixteen to eighteen hours per shift. And we did uh, work through the night. There was a short period of time where we had to stand our crews down during the wind event because it was simply just too dangerous for our crews to be out working in the conditions that they were in with the high winds. We didn't want to put our employees into any type of situation where they may have gotten hurt. So we did have a short, brief hour and a half stand down while our crews were able to work on other things, but not get themselves into a dangerous situation. But all in all, we did have a full complement of our staff working in the storm the entire time. We worked through the night and through the next day to make sure that everybody was restored in a uh, timely and safe manner.
Thank you, John. Um, my understanding uh, is that uh, uh, the RMLD on a comparative basis uh, was far faster restoring power than many other, whether they be municipals or IOUs in the state. Um, even a day or two later, there were still ten thousand plus people without power. Uh, is that, was your understanding as well?
Yes, that is correct. National Grid uh, had peaked at over eighty thousand customers without power and EverSource peaked at just around seventy-eight thousand customers without power and it turned into a multi-day event for those two IOUs.
Thank you.
If I can attest to that, I was in the storm room. So we were in for two days.
Oh, is that right? That's right. We have got an inside guy there.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So we had a mul- multi-day event from Sunday through Tuesday. And that was in the North Shore and it extended into Wednesday in the South Shore. Very, very big event.
Wow.
If, if I can add something quick, John, is that okay?
Please, go right ahead.
Sometimes uh, we may have some residual folks out of power. Just remember that when our troublemen and, and so during storms, we have bird dogs, which is uh, qualified engineers, technician, people that are available that will go out and identify whether a wire is Comcast or whether it's electric. And John's right, he called the stand down and then I sent emails out to all the police, fire and, and town managers telling them that we would just be identifying hazards and, and then, you know, to eliminate the electrical hazard, put out detour signs and then we would come back for restoration efforts afterwards. But sometimes if um, trees take down services and it rips the service out of the house, uh, people have to understand that sometimes when we show up, we cannot reinstall the electricity until they get a, a, the, um, an electrician and a wire inspector to do a um, inspection.
Right.
It's just physically not safe. So there's always going to be a few that take us a few days to work with uh, with the wire inspector, get those back up. We're all back up with them now, John, are we?
Yes, one hundred percent. We're restored.
Okay, great.
Great.
Excuse me, Colleen. On, on your incident command structure, your control center, when th- they were put into action, what was the plan or how did you guys handle their in, the inside workers? Were they remote or were they socially distanced inside the building? How did you, how did you handle that approach?
They were socially distanced inside the control room. We actually had three people in there, so they all had six feet distance.
Yes.
Two control room uh, operators and one community relations. So usually when the storm hits, Joyce, who has the liaison phone, she has the GM liaison phone, she's sitting there working with them and tweeting out the information because we, we try to mitigate the amount of calls that come in so that they can dispatch and work with the engineers for switching the circuits. But so there was never more than three people in there with proper social distancing.
That's correct.
That's correct. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to uh, suggest that we uh, move to number nine, integrated resources first and then come back to the payment to the town of Reading update, if that's okay with everybody? Yes, Jack, I think you're. You, you have to unmute Chuck, I think. There you go.
So earlier this month, I was asked to uh, look at the uh, potential uh, financial ramifications of COVID-19. What it would do to our load, what would happen to our power supply portfolio in the wholesale market? Uh, what were some of the potential impacts uh, to our uh, operations and our uh, budgets? So uh, I began that process and uh, next slide, please. Uh, in order to assess the changes uh, across the uh, six areas listed here, uh, we have to break the uh, the impacts out to those that are weather-related, those that were actually COVID-19 related and those that were due to other changes. Other changes include uh, new loads, uh, efficiency electrification program impacts, uh, solar, uh, economic factors, et cetera, et cetera. So um, we've begun the process of reviewing uh, the information relevant to RMLD for uh, how those impacts are occurring and seeing if we can focus down on COVID-19. Um, if you take a look at the next slide, please. Um, we also went out and got uh, some information uh, as to what is happening with other uh, entities that are in this uh, business and also in uh, at the top impacted areas. It included Italy uh, and other APPA systems. What we found was that uh, for the second quarter of the year, the one we're in now, uh, they were experiencing a six to ten percent drop in electric consumption. And for the rest of the year, the anticipated drop uh, was going to be about seven to nine percent uh, in electric consumption. So uh, to make life simple, uh, we focused it down to an eight percent uh, load reduction for RMLD for the remainder of 2020. And that started our baseline analysis. Now, as we go through the process and collect information specific to RMLD, we'll be able to tweak that number and go through and tweak the impacts. Uh, we're modifying our current uh, set of uh, tools and instruments to be able to do that. So the load forecasting capabilities are going to be there. The power supply modeling uh, will be there and I'll be able to work with Wendy on some of the budget impacts. So if we take a look for the uh, remainder of the year, quarter two to quarter four, 2020, uh, anticipate selling five hundred and twenty thousand, five twenty-four megawatt hours. And that's based on the load forecast for 2020 and eight percent reduction is about forty-one thousand uh, six hundred and forty megawatt hours. So that's what we would expect to lose in wholesale load, a slightly higher reduction in retail sales because of the distribution losses. So, next slide, please. So we went back and we pulled out three years of historic data, uh, or two years of historic data in the budget, actually. And then um, those are the bars. And if you take a look at the uh, powder blue line going across the top, that is essentially the uh, 2020 uh, forecast. Uh, the first three months are as forecasted and then April through the remainder of the year, we reduced uh, that by about eight percent. Uh, if you look at the red dotted line, those are actual results, January, February and March. This is what I mean by be having to take out, for example, weather-related effects because January was the warmest January on record. And February was warm. March's sales were down. So we need to go through and discount those impacts uh, as we experience each month in order to isolate the COVID uh, impacts. So, uh, next slide, please. So we made some assumptions for uh, being able to at least build a base case. We started with the 2020 budget as our baseline. The load forecast was prepared using normalized weather impacts and known and measurable changes pre-COVID-19. Uh, the revenues are anticipated on normal sales and expenses are anticipated on normal operations. Uh, and we use the uh, planned capital investment from the 2020 budget or for the uh, five-year budget for 2020. Uh, so we went through and we looked at uh, financial mitigation capabilities. Um, we can use the uh, rate stabilization and deferred fuel funds. Uh, we have the ability to defer or avoid uh, expenses and capital investment. And uh, then we can look at the impacts of a rate adjustment if we needed one for the remainder of 2020. Uh, so these were just all establishing sort of base case opportunities for us. Uh, they did not define a specific path uh, that we would be looking at. So what is unknown at this point? Well, until we get into it, we do not know the magnitude of the COVID-19 event. We assume the eight percent reduction. We don't know the duration. We've assumed through the end of calendar 2020 for this exercise. So uh, next slide, please. So we looked at load impacts on the power supply budget. That's the eight percent monthly reduction. Um, as we get information uh, from the various classes, we will be able to fine tune what uh, some of those load impacts look like month to month. We looked at the impacts on accounts receivable and uh, we set up a process. We, we are looking at the thirty, sixty, ninety day uh, outstanding balances and the receivables. We're also looking as we uh, get to our discount days, the, the last day of the prompt payment discount, uh, how many customers are paying the bills and, and taking advantage of the discount. So we'll be able to see how much the sales are down and then we'll be able to see uh, from the expected revenues, what we're actually seeing come in. So it's kind of a two-step process for doing that. Uh, we're also looking at the impacts on accounts payable. We have the ability to rerun the power supply budget based on updated market pricing and on uh, the resources that we have in the portfolio and the loads that we're experiencing. Uh, we're also able to look at shifts that may occur between the capital and the operating budgets depending on uh, what Hamed is able to do uh, during this period. Uh, if his construction uh, capabilities are cut back uh, by the state or by uh, uh, recommended uh, social activities and uh, operating uh, capabilities. So the COVID-19 impacts uh, might have an impact on the credit rating. That's sort of at the end of the day uh, to see how we're doing. But we do note it as a potential uh, impact and something that we'll just track. Uh, and we have impacts on the RMLD programs and services. For example, we offer residential audits. Up until COVID-19, those included a site visit as one of the delivery options. That's off the table right now. So we are switching to uh, a video audit and a uh, online uh, audit process that we're looking at uh, in order to be able to continue to deliver services even with social isolation, isolation and the inability to get to uh, customer locations to physically collect the data. Um, we also have uh, revenue and expense shifts uh, and the impacts on cash flow. Uh, and at the end of the day, uh, this all sugars off to uh, what we may need for a rate adjustment if the other activities that we're looking at uh, sort of fall through. So uh, next slide, please. So power supply impacts very quickly. Um, and I, and I put the math in here. I apologize. I thought I had fixed the line down below. But we took a look at uh, what the original budget was, which was uh, forty-six million dollars uh, divided by the five hundred and twenty thousand megawatt hours, three and a half percent losses translates to a retail energy price of eight point five six cents. Uh, we went and did a COVID-19 adjusted budget where we uh, reduced the uh, power supply cost. We reduced the anticipated uh, load. Uh, that's supposed to be one point oh three five. Uh, corrected it, but I'm not sure why that didn't take. Uh, and we come up with an average rate of point oh eight eight seven six as what we would need to uh, charge at retail. So how does that translate? The current billing fuel adjustment that we have in our retail rates is eight seven three five. So we would have expected for the remainder of the year for that to drop slightly to eight five six zero. Um, with the COVID adjusted impact, it actually uh, rises slightly to eight eight seven. With the COVID-adjusted impact, it actually rises slightly to 8876. And that has an impact if we cover that through our deferred fuel reserve of $674,000. That's affordable. We have more than that in the deferred fuel reserve. So basically, we can cover what we are expecting to see for a reduction in power supply revenues with the deferred fuel fund that we have. In other words, we can cover it through our existing resources. Next, please. So that's power supply. Now the question is, what happens to the operating portion of the budget? Well, the operating revenues for the last three quarters of the year are targeted around $23 million, 22,928. That's from the 2020 budget. Soon, the uniform expenditures per month, an 8% reduction in sales revenue for the remainder of the year is $1,834,240. We have enough in the rate stabilization fund at present to be able to pay that without changing the retail rates. So looking at the operating portion, looking at the power supply portion of the budget, we have the resources to be able to manage the impacts of COVID if they stay at 8%. If they move, we'll reassess the numbers. Next, please. So our response options, we're pretty comfortable with being able to maintain rate and revenue stabilities throughout from the baseline to the 8% level. What's going to impact us in terms of determining low and high cases are the magnitude and the duration of the impacts. We don't have any idea what those are going to be at this point, but we're tracking them and we're adjusting the model accordingly. Our response options in priority of impact is the rate stabilization fund and the deferred fuel fund. Both of those look like they're satisfactory to cover it. A rate adjustment, if we need it, we can reach out to suppliers for grace periods. I would point out that we actually had a supplier reach out to us and ask what they could do to help. And we're currently working on a movement of some of our power supply expenses in 2020 out a little ways, which would give us a little more breathing room this year and not destabilize our power supply. So is that it? That's the last slide, I think. Is there one more? That's it.
Yeah, thank you, Chuck. It's a very, very detailed analysis and looks like a great plan for the rest of the year, certainly. Do they have any questions for Chuck on this? If not, I'd like to return to item number eight, which is the payment to the town of Reading. Yes, please.
So we're going to be using that as a template moving forward. So each month when the bills come in, the bills go out and the payments come in, we will use that same template and Chuck will update the numbers if there's any offset that starts to come in with deferred payments or anything like that.
Excellent. You'll be tracking it real time.
Okay.
In terms of the
John, sorry, it's Vanessa. I have a question for Chuck.
Sure, Vanessa, please.
Hi, Chuck. A great presentation. Thank you. You had said that the anticipated usage will continue to decrease through the rest of the year?
Yes.
Perhaps I didn't catch it, but what is that based on?
The 8% number that I use, it's an experience-driven number that came out of some of the initial European experiences with this, as well as what some places in the United States are either seeing or anticipating as well, based on the work that they did. So we're relying right now on information from outside sources.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Very helpful.
Good question, though, Vanessa. And certainly if it kicks back up, that's even better for us, right? But it's better to be prepared, which we've been for many years, to anticipate this kind of an event. So I think that's great work, Chuck. I'd like to return to the item number eight, the payment to the town of Reading update. As we all know, we've been working on this for an exponential amount of time, probably about a year and a half or more, trying to come up with the right formula moving forward. And I think we're pretty much there. As I understand it, the CAB met and had a preference for one of the various algorithms we had listed on our site. The Board of Commissioners had a slightly different preference. And so I think what I'd like to do is propose perhaps a compromise tonight. And Mr. Hennessy, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, I agree, John. I was at that CAB meeting last week, and it seemed like there was some consensus that the three-year rolling average. In fact, I think a lot of us are starting to feel like that makes a lot of sense, that if we're calculating on kilowatt hour sales and it's based on a three-year rolling average, that there wouldn't be any spikes or the other up or down, that it would be more moderated on an annual basis. So I'd like to make a motion if I can. Chair?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. For the years 2021 and beyond, at the pilot payment to the town of Reading, be calculated annually based on a three-year rolling average of kilowatt hour sales at the rate of 3.875 mills. That the GM has the authority to adjust the payment as necessary in times of crisis or other reasons to maintain the fiscal stability reliability of RMLD.
Could I get a second on that, please? Anyone?
One question on the rolling average. Obviously, this year becomes a part of any rolling average. The first thing I would suspect is somebody might say, are we going to omit this COVID crisis out of that calculation? I think that might be a question that you could anticipate.
Yeah, I would agree that that would be a relevant question at this point. Things are a lot different than they were two months ago.
Yes. Now, do you take out a certain period of time right now?
Well, I think what we could do is certainly run the model to see what the effect would be either way. The reason we all felt the, at least on the Board of Commissioners, felt that the three-year rolling average was good is because it smoothes out any major deviations. And the compromise on the mills per kilowatt hours was really kind of in between what the CAB recommended and what the Board of Commissioners were leaning towards. So we try to kind of get in between. And I think there may be some, given what we've just heard from Chuck, in terms of mitigation of the impact for this particular year, that we may be able to take care of that, as you suggest, Bob, with some kind of modification of it. It's just hard to predict what it is going to be moving forward. As we've seen over the last couple of years, we've dropped by half a percent, a percent, you know, another percent. And we've got a fixed cost environment that we have to support, obviously. So this wouldn't even take effect until July of 2021. So there's a fair Yes, please.
So I guess I would just suggest, I don't think this motion language is actually on the agenda, correct?
Right. Yeah, it's not. It's not. Mr. Chair, let me say that, you know, I've spent kind of the last two and a half weeks playing around with payroll protection plan loans. So I haven't even seen any information on any of this. I'd like to see the numbers. I'm uncomfortable with even seconding this or voting on this at this time. Well, I'll actually see what the effect is.
Thank you, Phil. I appreciate that. I mean, the second was just basically recognized that it was there. Then there's discussion, and then, of course, a vote doesn't necessarily need to be taken if people don't agree with it. I believe it has been drawn up as a, and everybody will be able to view it, as what this means from a financial perspective. And what we'll do before the next meeting is make sure that that's circulated so that everybody has a view of that. And at least from what I've seen of it, it seems to be an excellent compromise in terms of what we're trying to do.
I agree, John, that the three-year rolling average is better than pegging it to any particular year. I think that's something we all said, and I think that was the last meeting or the one before. Given that we just heard Chuck say kilowatt hour sales might be down 8%, I do think it's prudent to put this motion on maybe for the next meeting and then have the language be there and have the analysis done of what the numbers would look like factoring in or out, as Bob said. You know, what are we doing about this very once-in-a-century kind of sales?
Like, as the terminology, as you know, is it's called a black swan, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I absolutely agree with that, that we should take a look at it before and after. And I just
I don't think the intention in any of these formulae was to do something that would cause an immediate sharp drop. So that's all. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
Right. Say one thing before I recognize everybody else. We've been working on this for a long, long time. And we have to get to the point of where we develop an acceptable formula. If there's some untoward event, both up or down, that's massive, obviously, we come in and we readjust it. It is not set in concrete, as we all know. But we have to get off the ball here and just then forward. That's really all we're trying to do. So who would like to speak? Go ahead.
Yeah, John, let me go first. Let me go first. This is senior member.
I'm sorry, Phil. I couldn't see your hand up. Go right ahead. Okay.
So, you know, I think, you know, we support the concept. I'd like to see the numbers. We used to have a term when I, a long time ago, it was called a blinking green light. And I, you know, where we actually struck the department to go forward and kind of pursue the idea, come back to us with more information. You know, in a blinking green light, you can turn to red at any time. So that's kind of a term we used back in the old days when I first got on the board. So I'm in favor of giving the department a blinking green light, getting the numbers, and seeing what actually the impact of this is at this point. So that's my thoughts.
Excellent. I agree with that. Any other comments?
Yeah, thanks, John. It's something that we had mentioned at the CAB meeting also, that I think the amount of money that comes to the town of Reading includes the above the line and below the line. I think the discussion that was had here was primarily for below the line. I think for the above the line, it's useful to look at the capital projects. And I think because of the storm, there's going to be some changes in how the capital is also going to be allocated. So I think to get a holistic view of what the town would get, because at the end of the day, the town is going to look at the total number. So I think it would be good to look at the total number so that they have a better sense of that.
I think there's, is there any reason not to include that, Colleen?
No, I just wanted to make a comment that because there was such a lack of maintenance here for so long, that a lot of our maintenance projects are actually in capital. Because they, because they're not, they weren't being done cyclically as maintenance regular projects are done on an annual basis. So they were combined into capital projects for transformer replacements, service replacements and things like that, because they were at the end of their useful life. So they're imminent to failure. So all of those are still capital projects. And yeah, it's 2% of the net plant divided by load. But just please keep in mind that the amount of infrastructure that we're replacing is a very short range, like less than 10 years to rebuild the entire system. And then you'll be back to a normal, regular increase. You're not going to see increases to the overall plant like you are building a new substation and replacing everything. It will, you know, flatten itself out. So it's, I guess what I'm saying is the above the line is pretty abnormal for what would be considered to be a normal amount of infrastructure at a normal municipal light plant.
Yeah. No, so my only point was that for the next four or five years, I know there's a fair amount of capital spend and the net plant is going to go up. And it's just good to have that visibility. I think it's good from the town's perspective to have visibility on what the total number is going to be.
So are you asking me to put the way it was originally, like, side by side? Is that what you're asking?
No.
We used to have the numbers done so that you could see below the line, above the line, and then a total. Is that what you're asking?
Colleen, what I'm suggesting is that I think the town would like to know what's the final number that the town is going to, can plan for in the future. So whichever way you can convey that information, I think you can say
Vivek, if I could interrupt, thank you. The towns have been asking us for this for about two to three years now because they want stability moving forward. And what we're trying to explain to the town is when a black swan comes by, all bets are off. So we do our best to try to put a formula in place. And I think the formula, by the way, from the formula we were just talking about, the town's going to be very pleased with anyway, because it's a really good compromise. And I think that one, they'll be pleased with it. But we can't spend the bulk of our meetings into the next year talking about what the formula should be. We've wrestled with this thing so much. So let's go around, I agree with you, one more time. We'll look at the capital in terms of how much is allocated, et cetera. But it's going to be done in a context of a very difficult year. And trying to predict, you know, if I had a crystal ball, if we all had the crystal ball predicting what was going to happen, you know, we wouldn't be at this meeting, right? We'd be on some yacht down in the Caribbean right now, perhaps, without having that stock market drop out from underneath us. So I'm just saying that we've done how many different variations on a theme of what this was, quite a few to this point. And what I'd like to do by our next meeting is have this circulated, have everyone raise whatever questions they would like, and then let's come to closure on it so we can move forward.
So, John, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm not asking for any new stuff to be done. All I'm saying is whatever information already, because in the past I have seen both above and the top line reported. So it's not the first time. It's been reported in the past. All I'm saying is just show that.
Colleen has pledged to do that.
Yes, Wendy and I will put it back in the original format. But people call and they're like, I can't see it on the computer. I can't print it out. So everyone's going to get a poster board with all of the things on it, and you can add it up and we'll send it out, okay?
The last one was an eye chart, if you went onto our website.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. I will put the totals back in, Vivek. I understand what you're saying, but please, if you can't see it on the computer, you're going to have to just enlarge it because I can't get everything on one sheet, okay? But I hear what you're saying and I will take care of it, right, Wendy?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, sorry, Vanessa.
If I may, the simplest thing to do might be to put Dave's motion, you know, on the agenda for the next meeting so that there's a motion language and then accompanying tables in the board book that says what that motion would produce with both the below the line, which is what it calculates, and the above the line. So that there's one thing out there. Because I do, I agree with you, John, we're very close. We've worked on this a long time. It's time to move on. But there's one thing to look at. And then if there needs to be a tweak made, you know, we can do it at the
Very good. I agree.
Okay, so the three-year average, that's the only option with the totals above the line. And we're going to do some analysis and send out another option looking at the COVID section of reduced kilowatt hour sales. Are we all in agreement?
And 3.875 mills, which is halfway between, halfway in between both.
We will take care of it.
Yeah, because none of those tables that are circulating now, they all reflect assumptions of, oh, the sales are flat, sales are up 2%, sales are down 1%. But we just heard Chuck say sales this year could be down, you know, 8%. So
Yes, that's correct, but then
So then just have those be
What we're doing, Davis, I mean, I don't want to belabor, but we're going to mitigate that with all of our other funds, right? To make it whole, basically, through the year.
Yeah, I'm just saying those tables are no longer, they don't really, they're not, they're not going to happen. We already know they're not going to happen. That's all.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
John, if hi, John, if I may.
Yes, Vanessa, please.
Thank you so much. So first, I I'd like to thank the commissioners for collaborating with the town on this. I I know it's been a long journey, but I and the board appreciate you working with us on this. So in order to continue that collaboration that we've had, that the commissioners have had with the board, I I wanted to ask perhaps the select board as a whole, I I won't speak for all of my colleagues, but I know I'd appreciate a bit of time to review the new proposal. It has been tweaked slightly from what had been some of the options that had been discussed previously. This obviously has significant implications for the town budget. I I know, you know, we've talked a lot about what the impacts are for RMLD. But as we talk about what's happening now more broadly and the revenue impacts that are happening to the town. It would be helpful if the board has the time to adequately review whatever this new proposal is. Perhaps we can discuss it a little bit further. I agree, you know, we don't want to continue to kick this can down the road. It would be nice to wrap it up, but having the board involved, I think. You know, contributes to that spirit of the commissioners and the board members working together. So is there a timeline for when we might anticipate having that so that the board has that time?
I think the the calculations that we've been talking about for the 3.875 and three year moving average, rolling average. That's pretty much done.
It was put up on the website on March 19th.
Oh, actually, we have Tracy has the 3.875 that Wendy just sent her. If you want to put it up, it doesn't have COVID impact, but if you want to show that.
Right. And we can send this out to everyone. We can put it on the website. So you have time to kind of take a look at it and and to try and understand what the COVID 19 impact is going to be on it. Okay, so here we go. So this would go into motion July 1st, 2021.
This three points. Wendy, is this 3.875?
Yes, if you if you look down the the mils per kilowatt.
Right, right, right. Okay.
It's 3.875. So you can see what the impact is in terms of the below the line payment. You know, on a three year average with, let's see, this one is.
Yeah, the title is the title is wrong.
Yeah, the title is wrong. Go down to the next one. Okay, right here. If sales remain flat. So it goes from today's of 2.48 million up to 2.549 5409 a million.
That's based on flat sales.
No, it's based on. That's what it says is based on flat sales.
Yeah.
And then if it go down to the next one, which is.
So, John, I I reviewed these. I know that the board the now the board chair, Mark Doxer, had proposed some alternatives to these, some of them that included a base minimum and a max to help create sort of guardrails, if you will, around payments to protect both the town and RMLD for fluctuations in kilowatt hour sales. So has the commissioners, have the commissioners reviewed those proposals?
We have reviewed those proposals and we felt that they were not appropriate for what we were trying to do.
Yeah, and more than that, to add to that, John, that we had this two months ago and the cab reviewed it and the captain, the cab voiced that having a revenue based factor was not appropriate. So we did have that process.
Correct. Well, I mean, Mark did a tremendous amount of work on that. We appreciate that.
No, he didn't. I I talked a lot with Mark about it and, you know, we we did have those conversations. We did closely review what Mark produced and gave us in January. So now it's April. So we did go through all that two months ago. So I think all we're all were for my part, we're so close here. I just think we need to see Dave's motion language, what the tables would be, how COVID factors in. And I think it's going to. It's going to still be kind of in these ballparks. And it's worth noting that the payments that 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 RMLD gives to Reading is is by far the highest in the state of Massachusetts.
Right. And, you know, the town is not in a shape. I mean, from a cash flow perspective, the town has double what the finance committee thinks is a conservative amount. So it's not.
So, John, I I appreciate that, but, you know, sticking strictly to, you know, there there's much larger considerations that both RMLD and the town of Reading have as far as reserves. And I think it is safe to say that we are very fortunate that both RMLD and the town have budgeted very conservatively and that we're fortunate to have those reserves, especially at a time like this. So, you know, I think I think the staff deserve on both sides deserve a lot of credit for that work that they do that have gotten us here. I think as far as the most recent proposal goes, that the commissioners intend on voting on at the next meeting. If the select board can review that before it goes to vote, I think that would be appreciated.
When is your next meeting?
We're meeting weekly. So it's.
You you'll have the information to be able to take a look at it.
So we'll meet tomorrow and then we'll meet either next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
So can I yet? So this is actually new, Vanessa. You haven't seen this. This is 3.875. The the sentence above it where it says 4% is wrong, so we'll change that. But I will just redo this one. These numbers are correct for 3.875 and three year averaging. Because that hadn't been suggested before. But I will add, I'll have Wendy add on the total with the above the line payment and any adjustment that we think would be necessary for COVID or for impact to capital to the above the line payment. On there.
For the sake of the board's understanding, can we keep the above the line, above the low the line separate? Because the equation, as we're talking about revisiting, affects only one and not the other. So so taking the payment in whole is not entirely accurate from from the way the town does.
Vanessa, we're talking about keeping it. What you're seeing on this chart is the below the line payment. I mean, that's the bulk of the payment. I mean, that's the large.
Absolutely, absolutely. What I would ask is if the above the line could be kept separate from that.
Well, it is separate.
It's always separate. Yes.
No, it is. We used to have, we used to have a box that was this box and then another box connected to it. So you could actually see both boxes. And then Wendy had a total across, but they were two separate boxes. One was above the line, one was below the line. So based on Vivek's request, I think if that would be helpful, I'll put it back like that. So it looked just like this with a box next to it with a total. But they won't be integrated.
Yes, I think that's a great idea, Colleen, because I think select board looks at this, they need to see. Okay, the the formula only affects the below the line, but there's also this other piece. And it's it also changes and we'll be going up with with our capital investments.
Correct.
Vivek was saying, right?
Yeah, exactly. So.
Okay, good. I think we've wrestled this one enough. Can we move on?
Yep.
Um, let's see.
Thank you.
No, you're welcome. Did Chuck, did you? Did you cover the home information sessions and the new rebate programs?
I did not, but I'm glad to very quickly. We got through two of the four home information sessions. We usually schedule one in each town annually before COVID shut down our our social interactions. And we are looking at creating a webinar either with a voiceover or that we could present in a Zoom meeting format to allow people to interface with the information that we would normally present. We post it on the webpage or run one webinar that on two separate nights that all four towns could be invited to. We're still finalizing that, but we're we're looking for ways sort of around the the social isolation isolation issues that we have right now. With respect to new programs, just wanted to call your attention to the fact and and these are posted on the website that we have a heat pump program. We have two rebates under that program so far. Dave Talbot is probably aware of this already, but the solar program through DOER has been extended to the end of the year.
Okay.
And we are launching a yard products program where we're going to put rebates on electrically operated lawn mowers, weed whackers, chainsaws, blowers and tractors. So we're doing that as part of launching the heat pump program. We got some feedback from the CAC here in Reading. And we added a program to do panel change outs, either upgrades if those are necessary or we've included the the new smart panel in the in the rebate incentive. So we've just got some additional activity that we wanted to bring to everybody's attention.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. That's up to the chair.
Oh, yes, please.
So Chuck, we're on track. What? There's still going to. There's still like $200,000 worth of or more, 400,000 worth of this special solar rebate that's available through the end of this year. Is it something like that?
It's a little bit less than 200,000 at this point.
Is that combined or is that the RMLD half of the of the DOER?
Well, I I'm talking about the RMLD half.
So then when you put them together, there's 400 grand still available for people in the RMLD service area. And that includes municipalities to use for solar projects. And it's a very gen. I can tell you from personal experience, it's a very generous rebate. So that's and Chuck, is it fair to say that we're in nowhere near on track to have that money spent based on the permitting you're seeing or the applications you're seeing?
At the rate that we've been going, I would not expect that we would spend that through the year.
Okay, so I just, we have two select board members on this call. It's worth noting there's this money sitting there that could be used for for solar projects in Reading or in the other towns. And it's sitting there ready to be used. It's a dollar 20 a watt. And so I can tell you, I'm doing it on my house. It's the it's going to give me like a third of the cost. And then when you factor in the federal tax credit, it's another third. I mean, it's ridiculously good. And the town could be taking advantage of it, as could anybody else out there. And it's sad that, you know, yeah, we're all in tough times right now, but this thing is sitting there to be used. And I just would hope that everybody does something to get the word out so that it does get used. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
And can I ask a question? Chuck, did you talk about? Did you talk about the virtual audits, home audits?
I had mentioned them in the COVID assessment. But what we're doing is going through a comprehensive assessment for alternatives to deliver the efficiency programs in the current and anticipated going forward social isolation isolation environment that we're working in. So we're looking at virtual audits. We are looking at solar in addition to the incentives that are offered through DOER for behind the meter solar. I would remind all four communities that we're looking at a solar program to put it out on existing public and large commercial facilities on a subscription basis, similar to Solar Choice One and Solar Choice Two programs. So we're we're trying to be as active as we can and see what we can do to to keep things going.
Great. Thank you, Chuck. Could we move into the engineering and operations report, Hameed?
You're on mute.
Yeah, I think you might be on mute, Hameed.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I guess me, I I gave the report. That was the report on COVID 19.
Oh, okay. You did. That was. Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
So I think we're moving into the procurement requests requiring board approval.
Yep. You ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
All right, move to recommend the general manager through the materials manager purchase for parents for the number Toyota hybrid Highlander SUVs with trade in from MHQ Inc. For hair, H A R R Toyota for 151,997 dollars. And one Ford F-150 eco-friendly pickup truck would trade in from Marquardt Ford Sales, Inc. for 32,536 and 50 cents pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 30B statewide contract VEH 98. The total of all four vehicles is 184,533 dollars and 50 cents.
Hameed?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
You get a second? Do you get a second on that?
Just get a second, please.
This is not a bid. This is just it is. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, wait.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Again, yes.
I'm sorry. Sorry, the internet problem. Yeah, this is not a bid. This is basically we got codes from the state master vehicle list, state it's a state contract. So we sent the bid to another bid, they call the request for code to many dealers and only four responded. So as a result, you know, we had this specific specification too. Like for the SUVs, we needed the cubic feet space anywhere between 66 to 87 cubic feet. And the ones that they're currently in the market on the PHEV and BEV. They are basically very small. They're not big enough for the engineers so they can put their tools and everything that they need into the the truck. So, so.
You dropped out.
The total, let me go. Yeah, let me go over the budget for you for 2020. We put in for $75,000 and in 2019, we budgeted $50,000 for a pickup. So the total is going to bring it to 125,000. But the the price of these five vehicles total together is 140, 184, 533 dollars and 50 cents. Which means we're going over by 59,533 50.
Can I add in that?
And the vehicles they were carefully selected. Yes.
Jim.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I think one of the parts that we're missing is, so we have a 30-point electric vehicle program. Pretty comprehensive. And one of the parts of the program is the fleet transition for us to come out with a fleet transition to electric. And to take that fleet transition and then to be able to offer it to town transitions and our customers. And we've spent a significant amount of time. We sent out requests for information to all of the electric vehicles, plug-in hybrid, and no one responded with the capacity that we needed for storage. The only one that came back as an SUV was a Mitsubishi out in Wilmington. But the majority of the storage compartment is is the physical battery. And as Hameed said, we needed about 60 cubic feet. The reason why we're going over is because we didn't replace the vehicles last year and part of the year before because we were waiting for the electric technology to come in. And now we're to the point where we have a number of vehicles where we just can't physically get the inspection stickers anymore because they're rusted out in the bottom. So we've had a number of NEPA conversations with the other general managers and we're just to the point where we we have to replace the vehicles. We even looked at leasing. Now, the only way that leasing for a short period of time proved to be cost beneficial is if we did the entire fleet, which we didn't want to do. So I just wanted to add to what Hameed was saying that we really did a lot of homework on this because it was our. We even had XL in Boston, which is the only company that will come in and do a transition to an existing F-150 and they tried $25,000 to put a battery the size of a you know, it's it's almost one third of of the the bed of a pickup truck is the battery. And it's 25,000 that you add on to a new F-150 truck. It's called XL in Boston. You can look it up. We even had them come in. So I just wanted to add that to you. So I just wanted to add that to you so that you would understand how much work we've done and how excited we are for a transition for electrification, but the technology is just not there.
Not there, right. So just to add more to that, for the SUV types, there are no BEVs or PHEVs SUV-type vehicles for sale at the present time. The PHEVs are expected to arrive sometime in summer of 2020. However, even when they come in, they're not gonna be all-wheel-drive as we required. And so HEVs are currently available for sale on the SUV class. And as far as the pickup trucks, currently, they don't have any BEV or PHEVs or HEV pickup trucks for sale. And they're expected to arrive sometimes in 2021 on the BEV and HEV class or model. So like what Colleen said, we've been, this thing, we've been going on, it's been a research project for us for past six to seven months. And we are right now, we're desperately need the vehicles, the SUV for engineers and one pickup truck because the, most of the vehicles are disabled and we're desperately need those.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I believe, does this have to be a roll call vote?
Yes, yes.
John Stempak, aye.
The head of C I.
Talbot, aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Let it be noted, there was 5-0 in favor.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you put into that too, Hameed, Colleen.
Yeah, it's really, it's really unfortunate we couldn't go electric on it. I just, it's really a shame.
It's a wicked bummer. It's really, we really thought that it was gonna be happening. And then we had the program all set up of what we were gonna offer to the towns for transition fleet and customers, but maybe we can try again next year.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're into just the general discussion for our next board meeting, Thursday, May 21st.
Yep.
Is that reasonable for everyone?
Time with me.
Okay.
Just, just one update, Mr. Chairman, when you get a minute.
Yes, please, Ray Headfield.
I have, I have emailed to me this afternoon, are all the, the warrant to be signed, to sign virtually or electronically here. So I guess I am the, the first one to have this done. So I got six emails with the copies of the warrant. And I also have an email that was sent to me probably about an hour ago, about an hour and a half ago, to get an electronic signature. So just to update you, the process has changed. So hopefully it all works right before we can, before I go home.
Welcome to the 21st century, right? That's wonderful.
Colleen, Colleen's been promising this for a while, so she finally got it done.
Yeah, that was my goal, no more chiseling on a rock. It just took me.
You're surprised what people get done when, when, you know, when things get tough. Everybody works together. It's awesome.
The follow-up board meeting is scheduled for June 18th. That's getting a little bit further out. So perhaps we, we just note that in our next, our next meeting to make sure that people can make that or need to change it. For the CAB meeting, May, Mr. Talbot?
Yep.
Excellent. And June is Mr. Coulter. Excellent, thank you. I think we're, we're finished. I have, any other comments? Yes, please, Bob.
Yeah, one question. I, I, I know Colleen had provided some information about customers asking for rebates. I might have missed it in the beginning, so I apologize. But the example was the Burbank Arena where they were going to be doing, you know, potentially a morgue for the town and they had to stay in operation. And they were looking to the, well, Colleen was pointing to us to see if we would have the authority to lower their rates. I don't know if there was a discussion regarding that.
Not specifically on that topic, there wasn't.
You want me to?
Yes, Colleen, would you?
Yeah, so I just, I notified the commissioners that that was a request, but you know, that's why I said with the rate doctrine, we're not allowed to give discounts or waivers, but we can work with them on, on payment plans. But I provided all of the electrical consumption to the fire chief as requested. And we were more than willing to work with them on that. I mean, we couldn't just waive anything because it's, we're not-for-profit and it's customer money. So unfortunately, all we can do is really work with payment plans. But I, I never heard back from them that they wanted the equipment not disassembled. My understanding is it takes five days to reassemble it and get the ice backup if, if that unfortunately was the case. But I think Chuck maybe next month can provide an update with, with people who are requesting payment plans, like what the numbers are. But you know, so far, it's been not, it's just been regular. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, right? We haven't had any major changes yet for payment plans.
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I, I guess that situation was a little different because they were saying the town was mandating that they stayed open. They would have shut down, so their bill would have, you know, obviously decreased. So I didn't know if there was any discussion relating to allowing them to shut down.
I provided all the information requested of me to the fire chief, but I didn't hear anything back.
Are they open for, or available for any of the federal or state assistance programs? Do you know, Bob?
I, I, I don't, and, and that would be something I, I think they'll have to investigate to find out if they, if they can. But I think what I was reading into it is they were looking to get a, get a, the town was making them stay open. So they were looking for either a discount rate or obviously some assistance from the town to stay in operation, where they, normally they would have been able to shut down. But because they're being, you know, being mandated to stay open, it's a little, little different situation. So I don't know if the select board had any, any input on that.
Karen, do you know, or Vanessa, do you know if they've?
You know, that, for first, I've heard of that. I was taking notes. I, I, do you have any idea why they would be needed to stay?
There were gonna be a temporary morgue.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I mean, I mean, it doesn't look like we need it, thank goodness, but that was one of the functions, or their function.
Well, you know, so there, there are FEMA funds and things and the town is tracking everything they've done and extra expenses they've spent related to this. Perhaps that's an item that could be included. So I, I did write that down and I'll follow up.
What we have done is offered to track the energy usage at any facilities that have been co-opted for COVID-19-related activities. The ICE arena obviously being one of them. So we are able with our metering system to track usage date-to-date and be able to, the financial impact of them staying open in the case of the ICE arena or continuing operations or opening operations. If it's a shelter, although there probably aren't a lot of community shelters in this instance that would be used because of the social isolation protocols. But yes, we are tracking any facilities that are, that we're made aware of. The ICE arena was one, the log cabin facility, John, that we used is another. And so we'll make that information available for support in FEMA reimbursement filings.
Are there any other questions or things that would, anyone would like to bring up? Otherwise, we'll take a vote to move into executive session. Could I have a motion, please?
Yeah, move that the board go into executive session to consider the purchase of real estate and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
You have a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Aye.
Talbot, aye.
Coulter, aye.
How, how are we gonna work? We gotta, I gotta redial in again?
Yeah, we got a different link. Tracy sent this, different phone number, different link.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, I'm gonna end this and I'll open that.